Well, I will be a special guest here today on According to Callous. We're going to be interviewing one of the folks that threw their hat in the ring to run for the Allen City Council to succeed or follow up, if you will, for Darren Mice. So to that end, I have Mr. Dave Scott here and I'm gonna let him introduce himself and tell you a little bit of the story. Go right ahead.
Hello and thank you, Stephen. I appreciate you having me here. So my name's Dave Scott. I'm a retired 30-year career police sergeant. Did 30 years, a little over 30 years, on the front lines of public service and retired in 2018. Moved here to Texas, to Allen, Texas, for a number of specific reasons which I'll get into later. And still have a desire and a drive for public service. I just want to get out there and do whatever I can to serve our community. And I feel that my experience as a police officer and the fact that I was on our budget team back in the city that I worked in. And my burning desire to serve our city is a lot of my qualifications for the position of city councilman. And yes, I'm running for Allen City Council Place One, following Darren Mice's previous seat.
Alright, well, thank you. And just as a reminder, folks, we edit the, or we do not edit this. This is all one take, so our little flubs or tongue ties will be in here. It's part of being human. It's part of being natural. And by not editing, you know everything that was said and everything that happened. I actually just met Mr. Scott in person today. We've chatted over the phone a couple of times. So if my questions seem simple, it's on purpose. Because if I don't know the guy very well and I'm, let's say, highly involved in Collin County, there's a good chance that you, my listener, don't know. So we want to give him every opportunity to introduce himself and talk about why he is the best candidate to replace Darren Mice. So I know that you moved here from California and I'll try not to hold that against you as a redeemed Yankee myself.
Appreciate that.
So why don't you talk a little bit about the transition here and why you chose Allen?
Okay, so I met my wife Angie in 1991. I was a police officer already. And we knew I wasn't gonna retire until 2018. We married in 93 and the whole agreement was at that time that we were coming to Texas, coming back home to Texas for her. She is a born Texan, born and bred. We got here as soon as we could, as they say, once I finished my career. And we've always owned property here in Texas and she still kept her roots here. Her family's in West Texas, which is where Angie was born. And that was the whole idea, just to get out of California and get to Texas as soon as I possibly could with her, once I retired. That being said, Angie found Allen on the internet in 2007 and thought it looked like a wonderful city to retire to. Because of the demographics, we have a very colorful family, which we can talk about in a few moments. And the fact that just a better quality of life overall. Another huge factor was the excellent education that is provided here with all of our schools. That was very important to us because our grandson Isaiah, who is African-American, speaking of colorful family, I'll get into that, like I said. We wanted to get him here again because the diversity and the fact that the schools were so great and just the overall quality of life. So this is our retirement city. This is our forever city. This is where I will die. And that's, that's why we came and couldn't wait to get here, like I said.
Well, you've made it to the promised land.
Yes.
So now that you're here, you did a lifetime of service out in your home state. And you've returned to your wife's home state and you're looking to put on another hat of service. So serving in law enforcement and serving on budget committee. And I saw that you'd served on some committees here in Allen since you've been here. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, so I've been extremely active in our local HOA. When we moved to our home here in Allen, there were only a handful of houses built in our tract or our community here. And with that, I just wanted to do whatever I could to help all the new neighbors and everything I could do for the community. As the community grew, we're now at about 250 homes roughly. More people moved in, obviously, and more issues came up, things that needed to be done. So I just felt the calling on my own, not for title, not for reason. I wasn't on the board, nothing like that. I just wanted to help out and do whatever I could. So I started doing things around here that involve a lot of contacts with the city of Allen. Because some things had to do with the trails just outside of our community. Some things had to do with road conditions in our community. All of those brand new. There was some damage that was done. And it ended up that the HOA board deemed me the unofficial official liaison between our board and the city of Allen entities, which would be police, fire, parks and wrecks, engineering, all of the above and more. So I just took the ball and started running with it and have done a lot of things for traffic control issues. People are complaining about speeders. I got Allen PD to bring a speed trailer out here to help monitor that. A lot of things like that. I've always liked to just go above and beyond. Even when I was a policeman, going back to my career real quick, I worked, you know, 40, 50, 60 hours a week depending on what was going on. And on my days off, I developed, Angie and I both sat at our dining room table together and developed the SANE program, which S-A-N-E, substance abuse narcotics education, was our equivalent to the DARE program. In fact, I was in touch with and met with Dr. Ruth Rich, who was the creator of the DARE workbook with the Los Angeles Police Department. That's where DARE started. And our program kind of tailed right off of that, same workbook, everything else. So through 12 years that I ran the program, on my days off, I taught 5th, 7th, 10th grade kids. I supervised 15 other cops that taught the same program in various schools. And raised $120,000 in donations over the 12 years that I ran it, taught it and administrated it and supervised it. And thousands and thousands and thousands of kids that I personally taught and that the other officers taught as well. So the program had a huge impact on our community. And see, I worked in South Gate, California, seven and a half square miles, over 100,000 square, 100,000 people living there. And 17 active gangs claiming territory in one part of the city or another, right next to South Central Los Angeles. And we had no DARE program, was amazing to me, with all the drugs and gangs in the city. So I took the ball and ran with that after talking to our chief, had his blessing. And I got that program up and running on my own, with the help of Angie, of course, and finally got the other officers involved in it. It became quite a success. That's one thing I'm most proud of. So I've always liked to go above and beyond and volunteer, cop or not, civilian or not. That's kind of what I do. And now the city of Allen, going to that point, I want to take everything I've done to our HOA and just kind of take it out to the whole community if I can and do whatever I can to make things better and keep Allen the beautiful city that it is.
Okay. So is there, now typically I would bifurcate this. So you chose Allen because of the schools and by having a diverse community.
Yes.
Whereas is there anything else that now that you're here and you've been here and you think to yourself, you know, I really like this. This is something unlike what is available maybe perhaps in the rest of Collin County or even the metroplex. Can you think of anything?
Yeah, so many things. One, the cultural diversity for Allen. That's, that's big to me. Let me go back to that real quick. Angie, my wife's Hispanic. Our daughter-in-law, Vaba, is from Liberia, Africa. She's an American citizen now. And legitimately, I must add that. And she married our son Eden, which is Angie's son from a previous marriage, who I basically raised. And so our grandson Isaiah is black Hispanic mixed. So we've got a really colorful, diverse family. We all live here in our home together. And that was a huge reason to want to come here. So the cultural diversity, the quality of the schools, as I've already said. The parks, the trails, the family feel for every part of the town, all the amenities that our city has to offer. Restaurants, entertainment, things to do, all family oriented. It's, you know, other cities have kind of a, maybe a club, go dance, go drink type of atmosphere. That wasn't for us. Allen just is, the family orientation around the whole city is just really a draw for us. There's so many great things about this city that just make it absolutely the best.
Alright. So in terms of that, you know, with the good, you have the bad. So if you were to say list two or three, let's call them concerning things within the city of Allen, or let's put it areas of improvement, what would you, what would you call those out as?
One thing is the east side of town, and this is one of the things I'm running on, it has become kind of rundown. Certain parts of it, the older parts of Allen, just like a lot of cities on the east side of 75. I know McKinney Plain are very similar. That's the older part of town, the original part of town. So that being said, I would like to see the east side have some serious improvements and facelifts for businesses. Streets, sidewalks, infrastructure in general. There's drainage issues when it rains. A lot of things that could be improved on the east side. Another thing I'd like to see improved or cautiously watched as we grow toward complete build-out, because we're not far from that, is I'd like to really see, if I'm elected, to make sure that we don't have a continuance of multiple-story, thousands and thousands of apartments in clusters like we've got going on kind of between the Custer and Chelsea boulevards especially. That's, that's really become, I think it's a nice, so I've got nothing against renters. Everybody starts houses out as renters before they can afford a home. Angie and I rented for many years. That's not the issue. It's just the aesthetics of it.
Location and concentration.
Yes, yeah, and the density and the fact that it's gonna overwhelm our infrastructure if we continue building these thousands and thousands of apartments in certain clusters. It's gonna overwhelm the police and fire emergency services, it's gonna overwhelm traffic issues, it's gonna overwhelm school districts. And I just don't think it's a good plan to continue with that. I really, really want to make sure we don't have a lot of that going on in the future.
Yeah, in, you know, in fairness, having been in Collin County myself for 27 years, that's been an underlying concern in all the big four cities is that we understand there's gonna be growth. We understand that you're going to always have some apartments. But when you're putting in the thousand-unit complexes, even if it's on a great road for easy access for transportation purposes, that becomes a hotspot or a, I don't want, I'm trying to think of what term I want to use. A burden, or an unequal burden maybe, just because of the needs of that massive quantity of people in such a small area. So it's not that it's terrible or, you know, itself's the problem. It's just that when you have a number of them, now those services are directed to deal with that and the rest of the city or the community suffers. It's that a fair approximation or?
I would say so, yeah, because it's just a mass dense concentration of people. And then, you know, our population's gonna grow. I want to see it grow. And I mean, I want to see it grow responsibly as far as the build-out is concerned. What's left, the 121 corridor is gonna continue to be built out. And I want to see a lot of responsible building going on there. I would like to see businesses come in that bring a good tax base, good businesses that are gonna be stable and are gonna be, be bringing a good tax base for the city, bring jobs and bring families who are gonna work those jobs or live in the city because they work those jobs. But again, the apartments, I just think if we use up, eat up the rest of our valuable land that's left, which isn't much, I don't think it's gonna be conducive to a good outcome.
Fair enough. Like I said, you know, I live up the road in McKinney and that's, that's, there's constant tension. Proper land use and what, what's the best for the city overall. And that's kind of something where it's a balancing act, I would think.
Yes.
And, and once you're in city council, that, you know, you've got to weigh the interests of the city as a whole versus actually the tax base, right? And the future city needs.
That's another thing, one more issue since you asked about things that I think could be done better perhaps. I got real no complaints about, see, I love it here. It's awesome. Our police department's excellent, the fire department's excellent. The people are excellent. It's a great community to live in. But our, one other thing I'm concerned with is our crown jewel, in my opinion, is our event center.
Oh, yeah.
The Credit Union of Texas Event Center. It's a beautiful facility. It seats, I believe, around 7,200 people. It has such excellent potential to bring in some really good tax base. If it's used property, it could bring in a lot of hotel usage along with that. And it's just not being used to that full potential. It's, from my understanding, bleeding money every year. It's losing money. And there's no reason to me that I can see that we can't get that place up and running to its full potential. I understand, like when it opened, Reba McIntyre was one of the first acts there. And she probably, I don't, I wasn't here, she probably filled the place, I would imagine. If we can bring quality caliber acts like that, like her or, you know, something equal, somebody equal, it would probably benefit us greatly. And the hockey games happen all the time. They don't fill the place up, although it's great entertainment and it's fun to go. Gun shows, home and garden shows, but those things aren't bringing the, you know, 7,200-seat filled capacity possibilities that it could bring, especially if the tax base that the city would benefit from it.
Sure, sure. I mean, I like, you have your EDC or your municipal development companies and they're a corporation. They look into these things. They find a way to work the deal to everybody benefits. I mean, and you have a number of large, I guess, anchor stores real close by.
Yes.
I think maybe, just guessing, but maybe the hotel mix could be changed up a little bit or maybe you could have some convention space closer. I'm just a guess. I know, I, a few years ago, when we had the 2020 shutdown, you know, we were pressing hard to relocate the state convention from Houston to Collin County. I mean, we were looking for a way to balance it out and we're like, well, we got this, we got the hotels around, there's convention space over. What is the Marriott building?
That's on Waters Creek.
Yeah, that, the Delta?
Uh, they used to be called that.
Okay.
Yeah, now it's called, I think, the Dallas Allen Marriott.
Okay. So we had the facilities where we could have potentially pulled it off. Now it'd have been a major coup to take that away from, you know, the big cities that have, you know, held it for all those years. You know, but again, and then the other thing, so I want to bounce this idea off you. I mean, Allen sandwiched between Plano and really McKinney. I don't think, you have a common corner with Frisco, but there's not a, so as far as a partnership with those cities going forth on some of these developments, like you have almost competing developments on 121 and you have the major intersection there on 75 and 121 and then over, of course, at the four corners. There's a lot of opportunities where if the cities would work together, we could really get some special going on there that isn't gonna happen down in Dallas County.
Yeah.
How, how would you see that playing out?
And that's what I've, what, one thing I'm running on, when I talk to constituents now, they, you know, one of the things I tell them is I really want to see the event center getting fully used that it could get. And I, and I say by using creative ideas. There's a creative idea right there, Stephen. Thank you. Honestly, that, that could have some potential perhaps. I don't know what the logistics would look like down the road, but there's another idea of something that could be used. I've had people ask me, what about rock bands? And well, depends on what rock bands and, you know, what kind of draw they bring and what kind of people they bring. And whether or not Allen Police Department has got the capacity to handle that kind of crap, which I'm sure they would be able to do that. We've got a great department, like I keep saying. I'm not just saying that because I'm a policeman or I was a policeman. I'm saying that because I know what a good, I've seen good police departments and not so good police departments through my 30 years of career. And Allen PD is an outstanding fire, outstanding police department. We have an outstanding fire department as well. So another thing with our, with our event center is the fact that McKinney just recently approved a 20,000-seat outdoor event center that I'm aware of now, that is gonna bring some serious competition to our smaller scale 7,200-seat event center. So we really need to just up and run into its potential. So hopefully it can stay there, you know, and not, not fall to the wayside because McKinney gets such a good draw out of the center they're gonna build.
Yeah, and it, and it's, there's some synergy that could be played off because they're close to each other. I mean, what, five miles apart on 75?
Pretty close.
Yeah, so I guess I don't, I really wish that some of the cities would use the mindset of how can we work together? As opposed to what do we need to do for us and us alone? Of course, the same could be said with every community and every state for that matter. So that, that being said. So we're talking about the apartment complex situation. And I, again, I'm not overly familiar with Allen. You're here, you're running to be on the city council. Have you spoken to your potential constituents about what in McKinney is sometimes called the housing crisis? You know, where people that work for the city or work in the city can't afford to live in the city. And if so, have you come up with any ideas or do you have any thoughts about how you might be able to overcome that? Aside from the apartments, which is the answer appears to a lot of people.
Yes. Something like that came up recently in a, in a conversation I was having. And where I came from, there was, there was a program called the Officer Next Door Program, where in some underprivileged areas, where the, maybe the neighborhood is becoming dilapidated somewhat, the developers or real estate companies would, would fix up, do some fixer-uppers on some homes. And Allen has some older homes. We don't have any real bad areas of the city at all. But we've got some older homes and maybe could use some fixing up. And the draw was, it was called the Officer Next Door, so they would give the officer, sell the officer the house for a very, very low price after it was referred. And it was to encourage officers to live within the community. Again, you know, Allen is, is not a cheap community to live in. And our police officers, fire department personnel and nurses, doctors, teachers, in my opinion, don't get paid enough, no matter what city they work in, for all those professions across the board. And that being said, if we could do some sort of a hybrid idea of officer next door, you know, make it more affordable for our officers and/or other city employees to, whether it's teachers, firefighters or, or city employees in general, to afford to live within the community that they work, that'd be great. I'd like to see something like that come up. I haven't dreamed up the exact idea of how the logistics would work out on that, but just food for thought. I think something like that could possibly be done to, to help out with that. Because even where I worked, most of us really didn't want to live in the city we worked in. Because as a police officer, you don't want to run into somebody you arrested last week while you're at the market with your wife buying groceries. But on the same token, it would have been difficult to afford to live in that immediate area because it was not an inexpensive area to live in.
So that, that's an interesting point that I have heard once before about the officers living in the neighborhood. And I would actually flip that on its head to ask a counterpoint question, if you will. So I grew up just outside of the city of Milwaukee. In Milwaukee City and Milwaukee County, both had residency requirements. If you worked for the city or you worked for the county, you were required to live in the city.
Wow.
Or the county. Now, I always was neutral on that. But then they actually did away with that requirement after I had moved on to Texas. And when I go home to visit, the areas that, of Milwaukee in particular, that would, I would say were idyllic, what is it? Idyllic? Like blue collar, really nice parts of town? Well, of course, because you've got Officer Smith there, Officer Jones is over there, firefighter, you know, Jack is over there. And, you know, so you had a ton of city employees would concentrate in certain areas because it wasn't uber expensive. But guess what? That, that part of town was really nice because they made darn sure that it was really nice. So to me, that was kind of like the counterpoint is that the residency requirement now put all the city employees to have a vested interest in how the city was because they actually lived there. So do you think there's maybe a balance that could be worked out there? I mean, obviously you don't want guys that's working undercover narcotics probably living in town anywhere, but you know.
It's a, it's, it's a draw. I mean, the, the Officer Next Door program, to best of my recollection is, in fact, I had an officer, a friend of mine from my department, who got involved in that program. He was single, didn't have a lot of money, but wanted to buy a home. So what he did was, he went, actually lived in a different city, but it was in a very, kind of a gang-infested area. And he was the only cop on the block, so to speak. And it kind of curtailed some issues, I think, with the gang activity there. But at the same time, he didn't feel really safe living there, you know, for too long, either being a policeman. And it wasn't like he drove his police car home and everything, but then eventually people kind of find out.
They figure it out, oh, sure.
Figure it out or find out what you do. So living in this, in a city like Allen, as safe as this city is, all of North Texas, as far as I'm concerned, for the most part, you know, if I was an Allen police officer, I wouldn't be opposed to living in this city at all. You know, and I would think that most of our guys and girls would probably agree with that as well.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I'm trying to think of one, what other could, interesting question. So now, if you were elected successfully, what would be one or two primary initiatives that you would want to work on that we haven't already maybe covered on your areas for improvement?
Well, one thing I haven't mentioned is, continued to, maybe I did mention it, continuous support for Allen Police and Fire. Want to make sure we stayed one of the safest cities in the state and one of the safest cities in the entire nation for that matter. So that's one thing I want to also always make sure. What that looks like to me is to make sure they've got the equipment, that they've got working conditions. They are gonna get a new headquarters for the police department coming up soon. That was a bond issue that just went through and that's gonna happen in the next not so many years. They, they need to, we need to keep this city attractive to other people who may or may not want, or may, may want to become police officers. The profession itself has suffered in recent years with losing a lot of its zeal to people, to new applicants. Our, our police department currently is really going out and looking for new recruits and also for what's called lateral officers. In fact, I have knowledge that they're going to California, coincidentally, to two places in California to try to recruit lateral police officers, which basically means they're already police officers. They're already trained. They've already proven they can do the job. And they're basically just transferring over to Allen PD. It's not just a transfer. They've got to go through testing and, and other things to, to, to fit into this particular situation with our police department. But that being said, I want to make sure that we continue making the city an attractive place to draw new officers, whether it's recruits or laterals, because it's, it's hard enough to fill the shoes. I, I was in recruiting when I was a police officer sergeant in my department. I worked administration. I worked internal affairs. I worked recruiting. I did a lot of things then. That's when I got my budgetary experience as well. But that being said, I know how hard it is to recruit new police officers. And I want to make sure our city stays attractive and, and a good place that people want to come and work.
Yeah, so the more attractive the city itself is, the more attractive it is to people wanting to come and serve in the city. Would that be a fairer way of phrasing that?
Absolutely. And I know with police officers, because I was one, we care about what kind of equipment we're gonna have, what kind of cars we're gonna drive, what the condition is, what the working conditions are gonna be for the, what type of community we're gonna work in. But all the equipment and things like that, that we need to do the job every day and stay safe, is also a very, very attractive and important issue. So if, I, I want to make sure we've got the budget to, you know, give them whatever is necessary, whatever tools are necessary for them to do the job safely, efficiently, and to continue to attract new applicants. As well as training and whatever they need to handle, you know, major incidents like what we had at the outlets not long ago. Our officers handled that top-notch. And that's because they had proper training and, and they were ready to handle it the way they needed. And our fire department responded and handled it on a top-notch basis as well. That whole response from all the, all the entities that went there to take care of, of that bad situation, to my understanding, everybody did an excellent job. I want to keep our city at that level. And this is a, this is a flagship city, in my opinion. I want to try my best to make sure it stays that way.
Okay. So if you could snap your fingers and add something to the city of Allen to make it very attractive and to build upon the theme of keeping it as an attraction to people that want to come and move to the city, keep it nice, keep it, you know, professional, if you will, encourage people willing to serve the city. What, what is something that you think that could be added that would be like the cherry on top, the sundae that is Allen, Texas?
Wow, that's, that's a very, very good question. Got me on the spot here, Stephen. To be honest with you, I can't say there's anything, I know why we came here. And there's nothing about Allen that wasn't attractive to us as a family, as a diverse family.
Sure.
And, and I mean, for our future as our retirement home, we had to make sure we picked the right place. And I mean, we came here for one week to explore this city. Because like I said, Angie had found it on the internet years and years ago. Thought it looked nice, but we never came here and touched it, smelled it, felt it. And we got off, off the plane at Love Field, drove up 75 and the whole way knowing we may get up and go, yeah, no, it was nice on the internet, but no, thanks. And I'll tell you what, we came for one week and we brought Isaiah, our grandson, with us because he was a key factor in deciding if we're gonna live here or not.
Sure.
And we got here and fell in love with this place. We were here one week, keep saying that, because within that week, we signed papers for our brand-new home on our wedding anniversary, coincidentally.
Very cool.
Went back to California, sold the house, packed up, got back here as quick as we could. Lived in a hotel for six months till our house was finished being built.
Wow, yeah.
And I mean, we just, hook, line and sinker, Allen took us and for all the right reasons. I mean, just play, I've got no complaints about living here at all. And I'd like to think every other Allenite who lives here feels the same way about the city.
You know, again, like I say, I live right up the road in McKinney. And I look at some of the stuff that you guys scored in Allen that we didn't get in McKinney. I'm like, Doug Gunn, what are they doing that we're not? I mean, look, some of it is location. I mean, probably most of it's location. Some of it is just how active the people and the leadership of the city are. And, you know, I think there are some fair criticisms that have been leveled at my town. But I think one of the things that, that my takeaway's been over the last several years is just because somebody questions the town or just because somebody's not certain that a specific thing occurring is not an indictment on the city in total. It's not slamming the city. So a lot of people are hesitant to ever critique, well, we could do this better. Now, you haven't really shown that. I mean, you were honest. We got these couple of things that maybe we need to. But so like, when I interview people that run for school board, they're like, well, you know, there's really nothing. But you're running for a reason, you know. So what is it that you're looking to, to improve? Or what is it that you would like to continue or to build upon? I think as far as I'm concerned, you've answered most of those questions. Is there anything? I think as far as I'm concerned, you've answered most of those questions, is, is there anything beyond that you'd like to say or any kind of closing? Ideas you wanted to share?
Not really, I mean, I just, I, I think uh. I think I can make a big difference, I, I'm, I'm certain I can make a big difference on our, on our council. Um, I've got good ideas for the city, some of the things that we've discussed, there's other things, but time constraints and everything else, I could have you here with popcorn all night telling me the stories. But um, I, I've just got a lot of dreams and, and ambitions for the city, uh, primarily the things we've discussed already. Uh, that being said, I, I feel that my vote on the council as a council member to get things approved or not. Uh, I think it'll matter, I, I think a lot of ways in public safety, I've just born and bred that way, that's why I became a cop. And all those years of police service, um, will never leave me, uh, and the, the drive and desire to continue serving the public will never leave me. Um, so I, I mean, I'm here for all the right reasons, from the heart and uh, want to take my experience and do whatever I can to make it a. Keep it a good community and if there's anything I can do to make it a better community, uh, I'll be determined to do that as well.
Okay, so now I'm going to have a little fun with you.
Okay.
So ladies and gentlemen, when, when you're listening, he has no idea what's coming, so, and, and it's entirely, it's entirely supposed to be in jest. So don't get too upset, so I'm just curious, are you going to be Dave three, Dave the third? Oh, I mean, because saying triple D is probably not the best way to go.
Yeah, um, you know, the, the Dave thing is just sheer coincidence, I mean, there's nothing more to it than that, I know Dave Schaefer and Dave Cornet pretty well. Um, and just our names just happened, I've heard some people say, you know, just, just vote for the Dave.
Yeah.
Uh, plural or singular, you can't go wrong, but uh, yeah, it, it's, that's just. How it fell into place, fell, fell to sheer coincidence, not intentional at all, obviously.
Yeah, I, when I, when I, when uh, David Dave went after Darren, I said. Me, my friend Darren, his brother Dave and his other brother Dave, you know, like the, off of New Heart, my brother Daryl, other brother Daryl, so. Uh, and then the other thing is, just quick, coincidence kind of humorous to me. Uh, I imagine that uh, city council room's going to be pretty darn safe, you got a former cop, private security and a former army guy.
Yes, yeah, that's right, Dave, Dave Cornet, uh, is a Desert Storm vet, Dave Schaefer owns his own, uh, uh, private investigations company and.
Yeah.
I got thirty years of uh, Southern California law enforcement under my belt, so, seen a few things, yes.
Will be the guy that walks into that room thinking he's going to get away with something. Alright, well, I, I've had my fun, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Oh, thank you for yours, I appreciate you.
And uh, city of Allen, get out and vote, uh, even if uh, Dave isn't your first choice, it's still important that your uh, voice is heard.
Absolutely.
Get out there and based upon my conversation and uh, knowing the other two Davs that are already vouched for him, I think that you'd make a pretty good choice, so. With that, this has been according, oh, you got something?
If I may add, early voting starts April twenty-second and election day is May fourth.
True that.
Thank you.
Thank you, this has been According to Cows and I will see you on the other side.